Okay, it is 7:02 on 7/1, July 1, 2021. Welcome to the Select Board meeting. Without further ado, I'll take a motion to call the meeting to order.
I'm moved.
All right, in second?
Second.
Yeah. All in favor of Jeff?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And Mary Ann?
Hi.
Okay, I would like to ask the Assistant Town Administrator, Diane Morris, to please read the agenda.
Good evening. So after reading the agenda, the board can either amend or approve the agenda as presented. Then there'll be a public comment if there are any. The first item is the reorganization of the Select Board. Item number two is the consent agenda, and that's the payroll warrant for the town administrator. Item number three is consideration of Select Board meeting calendar, July 2021 through December 31, 2021, and possible meeting locations. Item number four is a consideration of a bond anticipation note brought to you by Heidi Doyle, the town treasurer. Number five is consideration of various town board and committee appointments. Item number six is consideration of finalizing the new annual appointment process. Item number seven is the consideration of recording slash airing of public meetings. Item number eight is consideration of routine business, Select Board reports, and town administrator reports. Under the Agricultural Commission, we have Jonathan Hudson-Walker, who is a new appointment; Risha Mazza, who is a new appointment; Laura Robbins, a new appointment; Matthew Wendoff, a new appointment; and George Fisk is a reappointment. For the Board of Appeals, we have Rick Novak, who is a reappointment, and Ron Stafford, who was a reappointment. For the Conservation Commission, we have Courtney Eck, Michael Lesser, and Cynthia Ostrowski, all reappointments. Under the Council on Aging, we have Carol De Souza and Susan Pierce, who are reappointments. For the Elder Housing Committee, we have Janet Walsh and Kitty Sturgis, reappointments. For the Elder and Disabled Tax Aid Committee, we have Ed McGuire. He is a new appointment. Under the Farm Pond Advisory Committee, we have Melinda O'Neil and Karen Kaplan, all reappointments. For the Historic District Commission, we have Eugene Goldfield and Adam Redbord, reappointments. And for the Historical Commission, we have Ron Stafford, who is a reappointment. Under Leland Farms Condo Trust Association is Alicia Goody, who is the representative of the Select Board, and she is also a reappointment. For the Personnel Board, we have Nicholas Anastopoulos, who is a reappointment. Under the Public Safety Committee, we have Neil McPherson, who's a reappointment. For the Sherburne Affordable Housing Trust, Brian Robert Blue, Kurt Stegall, new appointments; Addie Mae Weiss, who is appointed as a representative of the Planning Board; Frank Jenkins for the Land Acquisition Committee. And we will need one representative of the Select Board to sit on the housing trust. For the Sherburne Energy Committee, we have Michael Lesser, who's a reappointment. And for Tri-County School Committee, we have John Douse. He is a reappointment, and that includes the moderator, the chair of the school committee, and the chair of the Select Board to make that appointment. Under Executive Session, we have meeting with town council and executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 3, 6, and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus Decam, 449 Mass., 444, 2007, to discuss 31 Hunting Lane and Igo Lebaske et al. versus the Town of Sherburne Land Court Action Number 21, miscellaneous, PS 000193 (spicer). Item number two is meeting with town council to obtain legal advice regarding the right of first refusal letter for 2 Whitney Street pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 6, and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus Decam, 449 Mass., 444 (2007). Item number three is to discuss strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation if the chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Select Board and town. And the chair so declares to discuss the town library pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 3, and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus Decam, 449 Mass., 444 (2007). And item number four, strategy session to discuss to prepare for negotiations with non-union personnel pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, subsection 2, the town administrator.
Thank you very much, Diane. Do I have any motions or amendments to the agenda, please?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we defer item six, which is the consideration of finalizing new annual appointment process, for two reasons. Vicky Relis has been laboring at this intensively, has created a document, but she's unable to be here tonight, and she was not able to get the document to us in advance. So I'm proposing that we defer that to the next meeting.
Okay, any thoughts on that?
Makes sense to me.
All right, very good. Any other modifications or motions?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
I'm assuming you're both moving in seconding with the just proposed amendment?
Yes, with the amendment, yes.
All right, all in favor of Jeff?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And Mary Ann?
Mary Ann, you're muted.
Sorry, hi.
Very good, very good. And I'm assuming we have no request for public comment?
I have one, quickly.
Yeah, good.
I just want to congratulate the Dover Sherburne Boys Lacrosse for winning the state championship this afternoon. And the girls are playing the state championship that started about nine minutes ago. So hopefully, we'll have good news before the end of the meeting from that, so.
What was the score today, George, you know?
I don't know what the final score was. I did see one, but.
Eight to two.
Eight to two?
Wow, that's good, because it was close for a while. I went to the Medway game the week ago.
Yeah, no, I was excited to see that the boys and girls are both playing in state championships today, and the boys won this afternoon, and the girls are playing, I think, in Littleton tonight, so.
Cool.
So when you win the state championship, does it end there, or does it go to a next level?
It's a state championship. Tonight's the end of it.
I think, hey, George, they ended up postponing the girls' game.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's going to be tomorrow morning at like 11:00 or 11:30, something like that.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Melinda, I didn't realize.
Okay. Okay, if there's nothing else, we have agenda item number one, reorganization of the Select Board. Any comments or discussion on that?
Jeff has to stand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, you know, let me turn on, I don't have my mouse.
That's all right, I'm making it hard for you. Yes, I would actually move that we elect Eric Johnson for another year as chair of the Select Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, most in second, any discussion? Yeah. All in favor of Jeff?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And Mary Ann?
Hi.
All right, lucky me. All right, thank you.
Can I make a motion?
Oh, yeah, please, George, yeah.
Can I move that we elect Jeff Waldron as vice chair of the Select Board?
Okay, so move, do I have a second?
I second.
Okay. I think, okay. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And Mary Ann?
Hi.
All right, very good. If I hit by a bus, you're in charge.
You know, we always talk, if you win the lottery, I'm in charge.
We need a clerk.
Only Diane Morris members a joke that I made like a year ago, but anyways. She always asks me what I would do if I won one of the big, big, big lotteries, you know, huge, huge, billion-dollar lotteries. And I always said, the next Select Board meet, I'll just be like, agenda item number one. Okay.
These guys all entered the vaccine lottery today, by the way. We might have to do that after the meeting.
There you go.
I do, too.
I think he's too old for that.
We need to elect a clerk, Eric, that's the last.
Next motion relative to a clerk.
Well, I would dominate Mary Ann Bertrand. We know we have to initiate her. Why don't we make Mary Ann the clerk?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
That's kind of blindsiding me, but what the heck, I'll jump in, I.
No, I never do.
You don't have to do much, there's a few things you may have to sign, that's about it.
Yeah, signing sometimes, yeah, yeah.
I can do that, okay, I can do that.
And I am I as well, very good. And I hadn't said this before, welcome aboard, Mary Ann, it's very nice to see you here.
Thank you.
Okay, number two, consent agenda for the just a payroll warrant. We have a whole separate agenda item on meetings.
Move to approve.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And Mary Ann?
Hi.
And I am also I, thank you. Okay, so move on to number three, consideration of Select Board meeting calendar, a proposed calendar for the rest of the reigning year, a calendar year, I should say, in your packet. And also think about meeting location, and want to have a brief discussion about remote versus live and someone like that. So first things first, does anyone have any comments about the actual proposed dates?
I think the dates make sense, they're very, I think there's one date in October, you just transcribed your numbers, Diane, it says.
Oh, yes, I did, it says, oh, one, instead of 10. Okay, I'll fix that, I'm sorry.
Every other week makes sense, and I like to stay on the same schedule with a five-member board, even if one person's missing, we should stay consistent so people know when our meetings are. On, as far as virtual versus live, I think virtual makes sense for the summer to continue to do. I think we should revisit that once September rolls around, and everyone's back, and if there's a way that we could do some sort of hybrid where we can have the continued participation, yet be able to be live and maybe less distractions.
Yeah, we can also play it by year. I was been kind of thinking about it a little bit, like if there's a meeting which is simply, what do you call it? Less public input or something, you know what I mean? Or if there's one where, let's say we want town councils attend, and somehow Zoom meeting makes it easier, or something like that, just, you know, we can play it by year, certainly after the summer. I know it's a little bit of a split decision on people's preference. Does anyone else have any preferences? And I believe right now we are authorized, or the state has authorized, the remote use, AKA Zoom, for the most part, until April 1 of 2022. But it's not mandatory, it's just simply an option, and it's authorized. So really, you know, each public meeting can do what they want. I do know if we did a live meeting, you know, we should arrange to have it recorded, which, you know, I'll discuss a bit later, but, you know, maybe it should be recorded and televised, so we'll just have to make sure it's scheduled accordingly.
I'm still a fan of the public, I mean, the Zoom meetings myself, just because I think we get a lot of participation. So I agree with George, but I'd like to see if we can explore the hybrid. I mean, Paul's right now in Nantucket, you know, so it's not just if you can't make a meeting, you may be able to participate in one if you're out of town on business or other reasons, in addition to your point about town council and other people. So I would very much like to see us either go all virtual or find a way to make hybrid be functional, because I know a lot of people from the public like the convenience of not having to drive to town hall and being able to participate, particularly if it's maybe only one agenda item that they would have to be waiting through otherwise to hear.
I definitely have an advantage there. I'm sure our Margo, I see her, she's at every meeting, she's probably in the Wisconsin right now.
Do you have Mary Ann and Melinda have their hands up?
Yeah, I agree with Jeff completely, but I think we also should think ahead to, we may eventually want to continue indefinitely with Zoom meetings, but once the pandemic is truly over, which it is not yet, it would be good to have technically not only Select Board, but other boards be able to meet with a hybrid model, because the public participation is so much better, even when the boards are in person.
That's true. Melinda, did you raise a hand raised?
As someone who works in elementary education, my vote, not that I'm on the Select Board, would be absolutely the hybrid model, because if we were able to do it with small children, you could actually use like a smart board and just run the Zoom part on the big board, and so the folks that wanted to meet downtown could do so, and you could equally have participation through Zoom. If we can do it with children, I would hope we could do it with adults.
You would hope, you would hope. Mary Ann, your hand is still raised, is that left over from before?
No, I was just trying to get it down.
Okay, okay. So I guess through the summer, as George has indicated, we'll certainly continue Zoom, but we might revisit it, and we might experiment with a live meeting at some point, especially we can get some hybrid technologies and watch other communities as well. I believe Framing City Council is actually experimenting with a hybrid-type meetings, half-live, half-remote, or whatever it is, and it'd be interesting to kind of keep our eye out in those circumstances.
If you get insights benchmarking-wise on what technology they're using, let us know, too, because I think we may have to upgrade our Wi-Fi service in town hall as part of this deal, so.
Well, let me ask you real quick, does every Select Board member have access to a laptop? Okay, because that might be one of the criteria. Okay, so moving on, I think that's, oh, should we take a motion? Diane, are you looking for a motion on these meeting dates, or we just say, yeah, yeah, they look cool?
I think, if you could give me a motion on it, I think that that would be, I know that they're cemented in for that time.
I would ask that the motion or any kind of vote on it. Don't vote on the location yet, we'll take that case by case, you know, for right now, it looks up to be Zoom, but vote on the actual dates itself. I don't think we need to vote whether it's Zoom or not, I don't think there's any.
You're not going to do individual dates, or are you?
This is as presented to us.
The only one I would say is your December 30th one, I think, maybe.
I think we can probably cancel, take that one off.
I say wait till it comes close, we'll reserve the date.
Yeah, okay.
We'll reserve the date.
No, we'll change the location to the Heritage, you're good.
I'm hoping to be in Florida that day, so.
Oh, sweet. So a motion by Paul, I think, to accept the dates as presented to us, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And Mary?
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, very good, very good. Next, we have a bond anticipation note from Heidi Doyle, the treasurer.
Eric, don't forget to vote on things, I think you've missed in your own vote.
That was one.
Well, come on, you know that line.
Yes, I might as well. That's why I think. Okay, number four, I see Heidi's on here, how you doing, Heidi?
Fine, good afternoon. So a quick update on what I'm looking for borrowing in the next few months. Going to try and put together a long-term bond in October from articles from last year and this year's ATM, any amount from a library that we can long-term bond, I'll move over. But two of the articles on this last All-Town meeting, I can't really put into a long-term bond right now, because we have a potential earmark, which may be funds coming in, and that is on the Pine Hill Access Road. And I also with the Woodhaven-Leland well, that's also another issue where we might get some grant money or ARPA money or funds in the air, so that would not go into a long-term bond at this time. So I'm looking to do a bond anticipation note on those two items. And the amounts have changed a little bit from what I was looking at initially, I'm actually going to ask for the full amount that the town meeting voted. So I'm going to ask if you would put a motion to proceed with a borrowing anticipation note of up to $1,611,735 for Pine Hill Access Road, and up to $198,000 for the Woodhaven-Leland Public Water Supply, which is the amounts that were approved at the town meeting vote. And it may be two separate timings, but I'm just going to ask for permission to proceed at this time.
So I move to authorize the treasurer to proceed with regard to the bond anticipation notes and the amount she just stated.
Motion in a second, so I was looking for the actual numbers in the background and see.
I have the number here, if you want, $1,611,735 for the Pine Hill Access Road and $198,000 for the Woodhaven project.
That's in pass, I think we have to read that into the motion, I thought. Oh, oh, we didn't. Okay. We have a motion in a second. We're on, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
George? Paul?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
I'm also I, thank you very much, thank you very much, Heidi.
Thank you.
Moving right along, we have number five, consideration of various boards and committee
I would move to make the appointments on the list as read by the Assistant Town Administrator.
I'd like to discuss them more before we just appoint everybody. I don't think we should make blanket appointments, I think that's part of the process that we're working on, and I don't, I don't want to make a blanket appointment of all these people.
Okay, do you want to, do you want to discuss a little further, George? You have the floor.
Yeah, well, I'd like to discuss, I mean, are, I guess, let's just go down the list. Agricultural Commission, are there five open seats? Like, how many open seats are there on the Agricultural Commission? I know there's a number of people here that maybe they want to speak about why they want to go on these committees. I think rather than just making blanket appointments, we should talk to people, and we ask them all to come, give them a chance to speak as to why they want to be on these commissions.
I think, I think one thing we should note, though, George, is the two, basically, every single appointment is a reappointment except agricultural, which really didn't exist. It was sort of, you know, I don't know what you call it, had declined to meet recently, so it's a reinvigoration of it. So George Fisk, so that committee really, the committee itself existed, but it hasn't functioned for the last few years, so it's in a way like a new committee. And then the Affordable Housing Trust is a new committee, because we, you know, at last year's town meeting, we created that trust. So basically, everyone, this, I'm just a high-level comment, every appointment on here is a reappointment, except for two essentially new committees.
Okay. The other question is, we're working on, Jeff, I'm kind of directing this towards you, we're working on all these, this process of going through applications and interviewing, like how we're going to do this, are we just going to go with our old process and appoint everybody this year, and then wait till next year to work on everything that we've been talking about?
Like, I used to, oh, sorry, not to jump in, kind of directing that toward Jeff, but like, are you talking about making this a one-year appointment so we can re?
That's what I'm wondering, like, it's just a suggestion, I don't, I don't know, I want to kind of, I know Jeff's really been spearheading the, and talking with Vicky, and Vicky's not here, like about our appointment process, I just don't want to go back to the old way without talking about it first. Not necessarily that we're not just going to appoint everybody, but I just want to talk about it.
I thought we already talked about it, said it wasn't going to happen this year, and we were going to try to perfect and finalize the appointment process so it would take place for next year. So I think we already had that discussion, that's why I made the motion to appoint these people.
Can I, can I sort of merge those two, is there, if I go ahead, Eric?
Yeah, please, yeah.
I would sort of merge your two comments, you're both right, I think, is, oh, wait a second, I got that someone, oh, you got it, Diane. It turns out that there's more, she has the list, Diane does, but there's more openings that we see here, these are the appointments that were brought forward, but there's still vacancies that we don't have candidates for. So in terms of starting the process, it's really not a matter of waiting a year, we're probably going to have to do this on an ongoing basis whenever we have openings. So I agree with George, we should, you know, get their bios in advance and have a chance to interview them in the public meeting before we appoint them, and ideally, like we talked about, have maybe more than one candidate to be considered. So I think it's not going to be a matter of doing that next year, it can be probably a matter of our next meeting doing that, because I know some of these committees have vacancies over and above what we see here. I would actually like to second Paul's recommendation, though, that we approve the names here, we can decide whether we should make it for a year or not, in that, given that we have, you know, more positions, that we have people, anyone that's, these are all reappointments, like I said, other than the two new committees, I don't think we should turn away reappointments if they've been already working on the committee, but if we want to sort of revisit the overall committee structure a year from now, that's fine, but I would sort of advocate accepting all reappointments, just because we're always looking for people, we don't want to discourage anyone from applying, so that's sort of a hybrid answer, I guess I'd say.
Are you suggesting it with the, with the one-year term versus the full term, so we can actually look at them next year with the, with the process that Vicky is finalizing?
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with doing that, I'm fine with having it be a full term or a one-year term, I'm not advocating either way.
Yeah, to the comment on timing, I think I agree that this, the overall ultimate best process should be worked out as soon as you can, because there will be appointments, interim appointments during the year, I mean, those are on Planning Board coming up very soon, probably. So it would be great if a new agreed-upon process were in place before those appointments come up, so the sooner the better, I would say.
All right, so it sounds like a good thing, I think Paul has a motion to approve as presented. George discussed a one-year appointment, so we could implement next year the new process, and I think Jeff somewhere in between. So do we have any more discussion, or a second of the Paul's motion?
You have, I'll have a hand up, Eric, Carol.
Okay, but Paul raising his physical hands, let me recognize Paul, and then recognize Carol.
I was just going to have a Kate for the three years. The list is a really good list of people. They worked hard for the town. They, we have a lot of challenges going on that are facing some of these committees, like the Board of Appeals, other committees here. So I think stability right now is important for the town. So my motion was for a three-year term.
Or whatever the years are, it's been, the terms are actually not shown on a piece of paper, so I don't know if some are, like, for example, Agricultural Committee, if that's brand-new, it might be staggered, it might be one, two, and three, for example, I'm not sure after all three, but whatever the full terms are, I'm assuming you intend. Carol's iPhone.
I had a question about clarification of the one-year versus three-year versus whatever. In the Council on Aging, which is one, which is the position I'm seeking as a reappointment, the bylaws say three years, is the one-year restructuring that you're all talking about going to affect the bylaw movement of people around the board or within specific positions on the board? Will the term change to one year for some or three years for others in the rotation? It's just confusing to me as one of the people you're hopefully going to approve.
Well, that's exactly my concern, that we have bylaws that specify the terms on many of these committees, and there are staggered terms already on these committees, and so if we did a one-year appointment, let me just pick the Board of Appeals, for example, you have three-year terms on the Board of Appeals, and they're staggered and all of that, and suddenly you make it one-year terms, then next year, how many people on the Board of Appeals are going to be up? And that's, that would be a huge turnover on the Board of Appeals if, if those people did not get reappointed, that's, the whole point of staggered terms and bylaws that specify terms is to provide stability, continuity, all of which would be lost by, by jumping to one-year terms now.
I understand that, and I agree, I think we should do those. I do have an issue with one of the appointments that I can't vote for, just based on complaints that I've received about an individual who's up for an appointment. So I don't know if I should pull one person out and say I'm not voting for that, or I don't know, or just, I don't want to vote against everybody, because there's one person I can't vote for.
Okay.
Well, can I modify my motion to be, to appoint everybody except for the committee that, that George names now, and then I'll do a second motion on the committee that George is concerned with.
I'll second that motion, if I understand it correctly, you're voting that we approve.
And I just want to.
And I, I just want to take an exception with the conservation commission. That's, that's the one committee, there's one person on there that I'd like to discuss.
So you're voting, your motion though, Paul, if I understand, is that we approve all of these appointments to whatever the approach, full terms are, with the exception of the conservation commission in this.
Yes.
Uh, motion, right?
Yes, as, as a courtesy to George, yes.
Yeah, I would second that. And we have, we have two comments here.
I have two hands raised. I'm, I'm good at, I turned it on. I, I, I'm now looking at it. Versus actually Diane Moore's, Diane, do you have a?
I just needed to let you know that the, um, tri-county regional should not be included in that, in that, uh, big vote for all the appointments. That one appointment needs to be done by the chair of the select board, the moderator and the chair of the school committee, and they're all here tonight to make that one appointment.
Okay, I'll take that out of the motion.
Okay.
But I would encourage the, uh, chair of the select board to vote for Jonathan Doss.
Thank you.
He's done that for a number of years. He's done a good job. I wish that he'd be reappointed. But I'll take it out of the motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll second it out of the motion.
They have a blanket motion, all but two, essentially, all but the constitution and the tri-county. The motion in a second, if there's no more discussion, I will, uh, while we have Diane Moore's again, is this, Diane, your hand is off?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
You got it Diane, I got it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'll take the roll call vote. Um, Jeff.
Hi.
Uh, George.
Hi.
Uh, Paul.
Hi.
And Mary Ann.
Hi.
And I am I as well. All right, did we have any, um, discussions about at least the one remaining that's still under the select board?
So the second motion, if I.
Yeah, please go ahead, Paul, yeah.
Would be to make the appointments to the conservation commission as was read by Diane Moore's.
Okay. So we have a, a motion. Oh, you heard the motion.
I would second his motion. I mean, it's subject to our discussion up here, obviously.
Yep, um, so I guess I, I'm just going to call on George.
Okay, yeah, no, I just wanted to discuss, uh, we have received a complaint about Cynthia Ostrowski and her relation with, with, a resident. And I have trouble appointing people that are, uh, I just, I just, I'm not going to vote to appoint, her back to the conservation commission based on complaints that we've received. In particular about how she treats people and, and, uh, and in writing. So that's, that's what I wanted to say. I don't, I don't think harassing people, if we get accusations of people from the conservation commission, we had another one last week. That's not one of these appointments that we shouldn't be automatically appointing people until we investigate what's actually happening. And if these people from the conservation commission are harassing residents.
And I'll say that I've seen that written complaint and I've actually received an additional verbal complaint about that individual as well. Um, it's unfortunate, but it is what it is. Uh, George, would you accept the motion maybe for a, a one-year nomination for that person perhaps? And then as we go through.
I'm, I'm not voting for the appointments of, of, if she's included, I'm not voting for an appointment.
I guess the only problem I have, and Paul's our attorney, but I, I don't, I don't feel, I don't, I haven't seen any, I don't have any, basis to vote or not vote. I haven't seen any documentation that you've perhaps seen. And my sense is that we haven't done as thorough an investigation as we could have in terms of talking with perhaps Neil Kessler's on here, the chair of the board or, you know, I, I just don't feel like I know enough to vote differently.
Yeah, and, um, I have some information I have not presented to the board. And I think you're right, it does involve actually a, um, you know, a little deeper dive. It does involve some looking at, I don't know if I'm prepared to not nominate. I think in an ideal world, we do a one-year term, maybe with that individual, and revisit next year and also give the board some time to actually, um, um, you know, look into concerns versus just, you know.
Eric, if I may, uh, uh, along those lines, uh, there, is there a process in place whereby if there are complaints? I mean, I agree with, with Jeff. I, I understand what George is saying. I, I believe, uh, George completely. But also, you know, there should be some due process here. You're, you're innocent until proven guilty. We need to hear the story on, on both sides and we haven't heard that. So, uh, yeah, I, I just, uh, think we need to be fair to people.
And the process is basically what, what it is for an employee, the fact that these, uh, these members are more or less considered special employees. And it's actually written in that actually, you can actually do an investigation, an investigation in anyone, rarely. An investigation is just, um, you know, someone asking questions and looking into it. And then if you want to proceed with some, by disby action, you actually would actually have a, a, a hearing and a process that's prescribed, um, in the hearing. That's, that really would be the process there.
Neil's, uh, hand is up. I'd like to hear from Neil Kessler.
All right, uh, Neil, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to comment that I, I, I think I'd probably echo what Marion's saying, which is, and this actually came up the last time we were, I was before the board, where if there are complaints or there are things that are happening that are involving conservation commission members, we of course feel that we can always improve as a commission and, and are happy to address any concerns that people have. But again, this is, I have seen the complaint about somebody that's not related to what we're talking about tonight. A complaint that has been vigorously disputed by that person. And I believe that there's a hearing process that goes on for any sort of complaint like this, if it's considered serious enough or credible enough. And, and, and I'm happy to have that process play out. I will tell you that, um, the, the complaint about the one member, Cindy Ostrowski, I, I have seen or not, I have not seen a complaint, I've heard about it. But I've, I've seen the, the interaction that has gone on with the homeowner as well. And, and, and I think a hearing would have been and still would be a productive thing to do, so that she can have an opportunity to present her side of whatever interactions they've had. I was up close and personal with that interaction for the better part of a year. And I would say that I didn't find anything that Cindy was doing to be inappropriate. And so I think she's a good conservation commission member. She's passionate about wetland protection, which is what we want on our commission. But if there are concerns, they have to be brought out in a public forum so that it can be discussed openly. Otherwise, to sort of curtail somebody's appointment based frankly on something that's just never been addressed in a forum that gives both sides, the opportunity to address the concerns or improve or any of those other things, I just feel like is, it, during the appointment process, it's not necessarily the best place to bring it up. I'd love to address it independently and happy to do that at any time.
I do want to speak up, I do, I do think, I'll, I'll recognize in a second, George, sorry, I do want to say, we are talking about two different things here a little bit. So the hearing process determines someone who actually is midterm and done. That actually is different. The nomination process, our appointment process is really an at-will type thing. So you can, you don't have the same threshold, maybe you should, maybe it's effective, but you do not have the same criteria, the same threshold to not nominate someone. You cannot nominate anyone for more or less any reason, it's not discriminatory. You, um, if you think that someone's time is up and you'd like to see someone fresh in there, you can actually nominate, you know, for, uh, many reasons other than that. The termination process we talked about is a prescribed process process, that's why. So if you do nominate someone, they're in, and then you have concerns and you want to terminate them, um, you go through that process. Uh, George, go ahead.
Um, I, I completely, Neil, I, I hear you and I think that's fair. I think that's fair that we should have a hearing and hear from her. Um, one question I do have is what is the status of the lawsuit regarding, regarding that property against all the individual members of the conservation commission and the conservation commission?
Uh, that was dropped two or three months ago.
Okay, I didn't, I had no idea. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, we, we, what we ended up doing is we worked collaboratively, she had brought in another consultant, Pat Garner, who's, you know, highly respected both on the conservation side and, and on the applicant side. And we ended up, frankly, they designed a, a, a project that was probably a better resolution than we came up with. We were able to condition it and everything is fine. So.
So that lawsuit's dropped, that's good to hear.
Yeah, uh, two, three months ago now.
Okay. Um, so, so Eric, I think, I, just after hearing everybody's discussion here, I think it is fair that, you know, you do the appointments, but I think we do need to have, when we have, complaints against people on appointed committees, we need to have an investigation and, and, and an open hearing about what's actually happening. Because we hear it a lot, but then it doesn't really go, we, we may get a letter from somebody, but we, I think we really need to actually explore this and see, what's happening, um, when people are having complaints against them. And, and unfortunately Neil, I hate to say it, but the conservation commission is the one that we see that we see the complaints against. And it's been two in one year that I've now seen formal letters written. So that's, I just don't want it to be a pattern of behavior.
Right, on, on the one hand, Concom has a hard job to do and they're more vulnerable to that. And, uh, secondly, um, I'd say that, uh, the, uh, the process should be a fair process. So I, I'm in favor of appointment and then a hearing and air it out. And at the very best, it's a learning experience for everybody. So.
I do, we'll probably go to an investigation to see if a hearing is warranted. We'll probably do some kind of investigation. And it has to meet a certain threshold. If we do a third-party investigation, those are not free. You know, those are, um, what do you call it? Can be expensive and we're talking, you know, some volunteers here and we're talking, you think of all the potential, you know, different people could be done. We, it's something I think which has a high threshold, whether it's actually, um, go down that road.
I think that's something we want to avoid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I just, just so, just to say, I, I do think that we can address it maybe less formally. Because I, George, I honestly, I share your concern. I want to, the commission does have a hard job. And if anybody's going to complain, it's going to be against people that say, no, you can't do that. Or can you do it differently? Or can you put up a monument so somebody knows where the wetland is? I mean, those are things that in varying degrees, and especially if you get a more sort of egregious violation or something like that. But I want us as a commission, and that's something I've really worked hard as, as the chair, to really understand just from a legal perspective and everything else. You know, as commission members, what should we say or what shouldn't we say? You know, everybody on the commission cares a lot about wetlands and the regulations and making sure everybody's treated fairly. But how that comes out, how that's expressed, we want to make sure that, that what we are doing is something that's minimally impactful to applicants, while at the same time doing our job to enforce regulations. So I'm, I get those conversations.
I hear you Neil. I think my issue is the accusations of individual harassment and people going on people's property. That's.
Yes.
I know everyone on this commission is passionate about protecting wetlands. I just want them harassing residents.
I'm, I'm with you a hundred percent.
I just want to speak up with the one point there, because, um, just as chair, I get certain calls and I get certain issues. And I, I hear from, and you're right, when we have our own citizens regulate other citizens, it's unpopular. It is. You know, I, I hear things, for example, about, um, like border health. They'll say, okay, uh, border health, they, uh, want me to do this crazy thing in the subject system, whatever else. But that's their subjective right and that's their, their right. The one thing I'll say though, I've actually gotten, um, four complaints, two written, two verbal, and one result from actually someone who actually looked into this, that David hired as an investigator, on the conservation commission. While they might complain about, while they're making me do this with a tree, whatever else it is. The five complaints all had behavioral aspects to it. I have not received on any other board or commission about the actual behavior of certain individuals, largely evolving around two individuals, which I will not divulge now. And that actually, um, go to a level of just appropriateness. It was not to a level of they're making me do this with this tree or whatever else it is. In some ways, I think a lot of people can accept that because there is again, subjective nature of it. It's actually one's behavior and one's, um, you know, I've been, the term hostile kept coming up over and over again, a lot of these. So I do share some of George's concern. I do, I know, and this has just been the last year that I've actually seen this. So I'm, I actually want to have, I don't know how I'm going to do this, but I'm going to have at least some discussions either with David or a council, by council to say, you know, do we up this to a next level here? And, um, you know, actually even go as far as a third-party investigation, because I don't think I've seen anything like this on, um, on other commissions and boards. So it's a point of concern of mine as well. So while we're at it.
Just a quick interruption, I, it appears like we lost Paul.
No, he's there.
He's calling it there, but I don't see, I don't see his video.
Yeah, he's there.
I see him raising his hand right now and he's.
You're muted, Paul, you're muted.
Wait, first of all, where is he? Because he's, he's on my page too.
Oh, there you are. How'd you get over there? Yeah, he is, you're right.
Hi.
He ran away.
I got voted and had to re, reconnect.
Oh, all right.
There's a couple of things I, 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 I wanted to say.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
Which is, we have three appointments in front of us. And some of the complaints that you're mentioning aren't about these particular people. We need to vote on these people with regard to the particular individual that George mentioned. I did some of my own, uh, looking into it. And I'm satisfied that she should be reappointed at this point in time. That doesn't mean that further review of it shouldn't occur. But the question before us is to reappoint someone who has served the conservation commission. Put in a lot of time, unpaid work. It is work that you can get sued for, there have been lawsuits against the conservation commission. I think the right thing to do here is to support all three of these individuals for reappointment. Remember that people are innocent until proven guilty. So we have to act on the assumption that they're innocent until the complaint is proven. And as I say, I did some looking into it and feel that, uh, a reappointment is deserved here.
Okay. Um, any discussion on, our, um, motions?
I think you already made a motion.
Do you want to take the motion one at a time or want to take the?
I think, yeah, I think you made a motion to appoint all three, so you have to, and that's been seconded, so why don't you just vote on that?
Yeah, and I would second that motion.
Okay. Um, on the favor, Jeff.
Hi.
George.
I'm going to abstain. I just, I'm not going to vote on this.
All right. Uh, Paul.
Hi.
Mary Ann.
Hi.
And I am I as well. Okay. Um, so now should we move on to the, um, tri-county regional technical committee? So Diane, how would this happen? Basically, would I recognize, um, who is it?
Mary Wolf and Angie Johnson.
Mary Wolf, um, Andy Johnson is here, is Carol here too?
Carol.
Um, oh my goodness. I forget Carol's last name, that's awful. She's on the school committee too.
The regional school committee?
No, the local school committee.
I tried to unmute Angie. You have to unmute yourself Angie.
Angie, who else should be here from your school committee? Anybody?
If Angie and Mary could turn on their cameras, that would help.
Mary, Mary's is on.
Angie, I don't know where Angie is.
I'm not sure, I've been trying to get her to unmute, but I think she has.
Hold on, I'll text her quick, hold on.
The two of them could raise their virtual hands.
Eric, are we coming back to agricultural commission?
We already voted on that.
Uh, so you're not giving the new people a chance to say a couple of words?
I thought we should have, but Paul nominated to vote everybody and we didn't do that.
Okay.
Are we still, I mean, there's no reason we, there's no reason we can't do that.
Angie.
But let's finish what we're doing here with agriculture, Angie.
I'm trying to, I'm texting Angie right now.
I think she disappeared or.
So Diane, it's a process amongst the three of us, or one of us like, you know, nominates, or the seconds we go down and vote and so on.
It's a, it's a process just between the three, a three, uh, uh, the chair of the select board, the chair of the school committee and Mary Wolf, the moderator.
While waiting for the attendance, I'll just make a statement that I think, um, Johnson, no-brainer, I think is great. I don't know if people realize he was in the first or second graduating class actually in the, in the tri, in the tech school. And, uh, he's very much engaged with that, so. I wholeheartedly support his nomination. I see Mary Wolf has raised her virtual hand. Thank you, Mary.
I, I, I certainly back John's nomination to this. In fact, when I was, uh, chairing advisory, I had John and the, um, head of the regional school come up and talk to advisory and tell us about what's happening down there. And, and there's some good stuff going on there and, and John's done a great job, so I'm totally with him there.
Yeah, good. John's not here by any chance, is he?
I don't think so.
No, no, I don't see him.
No.
And I can't get, I tried to chat and unmute Angie, I can't get any response.
Okay, well, we do have a quorum. Uh, is it, oh, there's, oh, there, it says Pam Dell's is John.
I just spoke to Angie, I just spoke to Angie and she's, she's jumping back on now. She had to do something at her house.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
Yeah, she's.
There she is.
Having a spin the night, the boys just got done with the game and then they went to eat and now I have lots of teenagers in my house.
Oh, good.
Yeah, you're good. All right, so I guess, uh, we have the, uh, we have the three of us necessary.
Yes.
Uh, amongst us, is there any, um, motions relative to an appointment of John Dell's to the tri-county, uh, tri-county regional tech school committee? Tri-County Regional Tech School Committee? Moved by Mary. Is there a second?
A second.
To vote, Mary Ann, I think Angie has to second.
I didn't know if I got to second or you did. By me. Thank you, George.
Absolutely, Angie. Okay. So all in favor, Angie? Mary? I might as well. John, did you want to make a statement or anything or are you good?
We've got a, a busy year coming up on the Tri-County School Committee. We've just been invited into the SBA program and we're looking at the doing a renovation to the schools. We're into the second phase of trying to select a OPM, which we'll be interviewing four candidates next week. So I think you'll be hearing a lot from us in the next couple of years.
Look forward to it. Now, did I get this stat right? Were you the first graduating class or the second graduate?
Graduating class, first class to go through all four years. My mother was on the building committee.
You know, I've never been to that school. I, you know, I mean, I've never like understood all about the tech until this year because we talked about it for school committee for our new members. So that was really interesting for them.
The other thing we have is our superintendent retired yesterday. And we have a new superintendent that took over today, Catherine McGuire. And we look forward to seeing where she takes us in the future.
Very good. Paul, did you have a question?
I was just joking. I was gonna say, was that second graduating class, the class of eighteen sixty-two?
I've no doubt that a Dells graduated in eighteen sixty-two, but
John, how many students, do we have a number of students right now?
We have, we had two students, I believe they were both seniors this year. I'd love to see an increase in students from Sherburne. There's a lot of missed opportunity for the Sherburne students at Tri-County. Really have some great, great programs. I was sad to see my counterpart from Medfield step down July first, which was Dave Bento. He was a great addition to, to the committee, so.
John, do Dover students also go to Tri-County or do Dover students go to Norfolk Aggie?
No, Dover, Dover students go to Minute Man.
Oh, okay.
When the school was formed in the, I think it was about seventy-three, seventy-four, Dover voted not to, to opt into it. Then when they got, tried to join the district, there was some bad blood between Dover and Walpole.
I didn't know that history. That's interesting.
So they're part, part of Minute Man.
Alright, and thank you very much for serving, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, Angie.
Thanks, George, for getting me. I'm gonna go rowdy. I'm gonna send him over to Neil Kessler's house, actually. Thanks, guys.
We'll finish up this agenda item, but anyone have anything else they want to state about this, about this agenda item in general for the appointments before I move on?
As Mary Ann suggested, you want to give people, if they want to speak, a chance to say something, I think there's some people on here.
If people could raise their, on the Zoom, if you raise your virtual hand, if you want to say something, you're more than welcome to do so.
People that are new appointments to Agricultural Commission.
Yep, I see it too. Grisha, feel free to speak. There you are.
Hi, thanks, thanks, Eric. Yes, I've been, I've been living here about six years or so and I've got a couple of kids in the school system. And I really love the rural nature of the town. And I'm passionate about local agriculture. What's that?
You're breaking up a little bit.
Oh, is that, is that better?
I can hear you.
So I'm not sure what you guys missed or not, but I was saying that I've lived here for about six years and I have a few kids at Pine Hill. One going into the middle school and I'm passionate about local agriculture. So I'm pretty excited about, you know, getting on this agricultural committee. And I hope I can contribute.
Very good. Thank you very much for
Thank you for volunteering, yes.
Thank you very much. Absolutely. Um, I see, you know, Kurt.
Yeah, hi. So I'm a new appointment to the Affordable Housing Trust. I, I've been a resident of Sherburne for one year. Moved here last summer with my wife Stephanie and we have a ten-month-old daughter, Emmy. And so I've been, I'm, I'm a lawyer and I practice, my practice is actually representing developers of affordable housing. So I've got about four years' experience doing that. And then prior to that, I was working actually for the state legislature. I was the research director of the Joint Committee on Housing. And I also did a clerkship after law school with the housing court. So I've got sort of a, an array of experience in the, the area and I'm excited to be able to contribute to the, to the town.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for the volunteerism.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
You know, and I have one over here, but I just want to say that in general, we've talked about this many times. The incredible skill set that comes in for no money for sheer volunteerism. Sherburne is very, very much blessed with that. No question about it.
That Matt Wendorf is here. Matt?
I see Carol.
Carol, sorry.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm a new member of Sherburne within the past two years. I'm on the Committee of Disability Advisory Board and I serve on the Council on Aging. And I will say that I'm learning the politics of the area as well as attending annual meetings and so on. And obviously, it's bit was stirred up as I entered the Council on Aging with new staff and the bylaws, which were written fifty years ago, revised twenty-five years ago, will now be under my leadership in that area revised for, hopefully not for the next twenty-five years. We might be coming to you with some recommendations and some needs for clarification as the Disability Advisory Board is in fact just that, an advisor to the town. The, the Council on Aging has a very different role, which is supervisory of staff and so on, when we are not physically present in the, in the staff offices and so on. So it's a little bit of turmoil going on in the Council on Aging, changing offices perhaps. Moving around the Town Hall Building, I don't know. Looking forward to further discussion on a senior center and I'm very happy to be a part of these committees and encourage you to continue communication with the committees who really need some, some guidance along the way as we do things like rewriting bylaws and changing procedures after twenty-five years. Or even fifty years with some of the procedures. Thank you very much for giving me a few minutes time.
Thank you very much, Carol. Thank you for your time. And Matt, actually, Paul, you have your hand raised real quick and then I want to recognize Matt.
At the end, I wanted to say something twenty minutes ago, but let me say it at the end after that.
Okay, sorry, absolutely, absolutely. Matt, Matt Wendoff.
I'll be quick. Hi, everyone. Thank you for the time. Appreciate it. My name's Matt Wendorf. My wife and I were Sherburne three years ago and we moved, part of the reason we moved here was the strong agrarian history of this town and very excited for this opportunity to participate.
Good. Thank you for your time. Diane, do you have something quick before I recognize Paul?
I, I do. I just want to make sure that the board votes somebody to be on the Housing Trust as a representative. Because we need to have a select board member on that committee on the Housing Trust.
I'll do it.
That's really a good, you're well qualified too, I think.
My, my real estate experience, I think, would be good for that, so.
After I recognize Paul, do we vote on that, Diane?
Yes, you should.
Okay, let me, let me, let me at least get to what Paul, because if he wants kind of feel guilty if I didn't recognize him before. Paul?
Hi, I had wanted to say and want to say now profound gratitude to these volunteers. Most of them are reappointments, but for the new folks and for the existing folks, thank you so much for serving the town. This town operates on the basis of volunteerism. It is the lifeblood of the community. We very much welcome you. Thank you, is what I wanted to say. With regard to George's volunteering for the trust, I'd move to appoint George as the select board representative to the trust.
Very good.
Second that.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff? George? Paul? Mary Ann? And I am also I. Doing that. Thank you for all.
One other quick thing on the appointments, Diane, great job. I know, working with Vicky to get these posted out on Nextdoor, I think you got some more responses for people by having it out on social media. I think that's great. We should be publishing as much as we can in multiple places so we can get more volunteers.
It, it looks like the way to do it is to post, like you said, on, on Nextdoor. And I think as the months go by, I'm going to have some more appointments coming forward.
Yeah, well, I would add to George's comment because we deferred on item six because Vicky can't be here. So maybe whenever we schedule Vicky on the process, if we could have that gaps list of any board positions that are currently unfilled so that we're at least aware of that.
Okay, so moving on, we are, per our previous vote, not going to address agenda item number six. Agenda item number seven, consideration of recording slash airing public meetings. Now, David, I know was taking the lead on this. Unfortunately, David cannot be here tonight. So I expect maybe a light discussion and basic continuation until when, when David can be here. I just had a couple of questions on that. For getting regular live meetings for, for Zoom meetings, when, when a board, and I'll care, I'll just limit it to those boards that fall under the Board of Select. Boards or committees that we, that we nominate, particularly regulatory boards and committees. Are they recording and archiving all their Zoom meetings? Does anyone know?
Eric, I know that the ZBA regularly records their meetings and gets them posted with DSC TV and then they eventually end up on YouTube.
Yeah, that's huge. I've watched them for some of these hearings, actually.
I don't think Conservation puts theirs on YouTube and sends it to DSC TV or to David for him to upload them and send them to DSC TV.
I'm pretty sure the Board of Health does.
The Board of Health does, but he asked me, I think, did you say under the select board?
I did, just under our purview. I mean, I'd be interested in what other, the regulatory, you know, there's Planning Board, Board of Health, very important regulatory boards, our policymaking boards, but they're really independent boards, you know what I mean? So I'm just caring about policy really.
And they are put on, they are put on YouTube and sent over to DSC TV.
Your planning board definitely, a ZBA definitely, as I know, I personally watched them many times. I'm pretty sure Board of Health is. I mean, is there any reason why Conservation doesn't archive?
I honestly don't know, Eric, that you asked me that question. I just know that they don't come through to us. We don't seem to get them.
We get them up there? I mean, does someone have them on a cloud or something? It seems, it just seems to be bad optics because we just had a whole discussion about, you know, the behavior of members of the Conservation Commission. And now it turns out that they're not archiving videos.
As you probably know, I mentioned to you.
Discussion. Let's just put it that way.
When we click recording, you may not know this, but it brings up a choice to record on your computer or on the cloud. So I always click the cloud, which I think is where they all should go. But I'm not sure. I think David administers that for the town's overall Zoom account. I believe they're stored in a cloud. Now, I had heard that perhaps Zoom only keeps them for three months. I don't know if that's true or not. But I don't know that they get, it's, you can imagine, it's quite a bit of storage if you think of all the towns and minutes of meetings and the density, so.
And I understand, for example, and we did live meetings, it costs money to hire someone to come there and have the video cameras and put up the, you know, microphones and so on like that. But it doesn't cost anything to record a Zoom meeting. Pushed, I think, Jeff, you pushed a button at the beginning of the thing there.
Yeah, it's all you had to do. The only thing is, you know, very few, basically it's primarily the Board of Health and the Select Board that get recorded because they're in that room on the second floor, whereas where advisory used to be, and I think that's where Concom meets is the other side where there's no TV cameras. So if you think of the past, they probably only had written minutes before, pre-Zoom.
Great idea that they can be recorded.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
That's an advantage of doing these virtual meetings, that people can see everything they're doing.
Not only that, you know, if someone's taking minutes, it's a way you can sort of validate the minutes after the fact too. If you have written minutes, you can double check your notes and.
As far as to say that with live meetings, I think certain key boards and commissions should be recorded. And that's all the ones I, you know, even though again, it's not under us, but you know, Planning Board, Board of Health, ZBA and Conservation Commission, you know, in this day and age, it's almost, I can't think of a reason why you wouldn't. I would be curious if anyone knows why they wouldn't be archived, or if we still have them. Let's get them back up and archive them. It's just, I think it's, it kind of lacks transparency to the citizens to some degree. You know, I'm less concerned about, I'm just gonna look at the list we just did. I'm less concerned with Council of Aging, Farm Pond Advisory, the very important boards and committees, but probably, you know, less likely to, you know, need to have recording, less likely basically, you know, recordings go both directions. I think they help all parties that are trying to do the right thing. And anyways, I don't know if there's any more discussion on this, or we just take it back when David does it. I guess Diane, I'm gonna ask you, if you could clarify with David, do we have any of these recordings on some kind of cloud somewhere that we can start putting back up onto YouTube and archiving these things?
Okay, I will check with him.
Do we, do we make a, do we need to make a motion and vote on requiring boards if they're on Zoom meetings to record them?
I, I'm willing to support that motion, but I, I also would, in addition to talking to David, I would like this to be on our next agenda too, so that we understand.
We can wait till next, we can wait till next, if you want.
I think that's probably the most sensible, because then we'll know kind of where we are too, but I support the motion and the idea of doing that.
I support it too. I'm wondering if there's any way to control the organization of our meetings on YouTube. You know, if you go to Sherburne Board, Sherburne Select Board, for example, on, on YouTube, you have to scroll and scroll and scroll. You find two thousand sixteen and you find two thousand nineteen and they're all mixed up. I mean, is there any way to consolidate those?
You know what I think should happen, Mary Ann? Because I've had that same issue. They have to, they don't have, they should have consistent naming nomenclature. So like, so no matter what, every select one meeting is named, select board, that, 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 and this date. So you can do a search function for them and you can find it. You kind of can't, you kind of can't, and you are correct. And I'm, I can find things eventually, but I gotta search like five, six times using different keywords and stuff like that. I don't know how much you can cluster them. I don't know enough about YouTube, if other people know about that.
Well, well, the person to talk to is, is Mike Klein, who's Chair of Dover Sherburne Cable TV. But I think the way to solve it isn't that, it's to cause the link for each minute be on our town website. In other words, you click on Select Board and you click on, you know, meeting recordings and have just the date there. And it may not match what the name and the link is, but as long as you make the title on that link be right on our town website, you may not have to search on YouTube, you can search on our town website.
Right, then you go directly to the meeting you want.
Correct. It would require some work on Dover Sherburne Cable TV's part, but whatever they named the file should then go to a link on our website with that specific date of whichever committee it was, you know. So I think the search shouldn't be a search engine, it should be just going to our website and having it easy access.
I agree.
So, so if we could add this, Diane, maybe, and when, I forget, is it the twenty-third? When's our next meeting? We should probably talk about this with David present and then we can vote.
Fine, maybe I can invite Mike Klein, if he'd be willing to come.
Yeah, yeah, if you're in any trouble, I know him pretty well, so I can write to him.
No, I don't really have, no, I know him pretty well too. Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. There is something also, it's not on this agenda. And it's unfortunate, I don't know how much, I don't think we have the latitude to discuss it, but I'm gonna mention it, that can be discussed later. And that's, uh, committees that are under the Select Board seem to consistently have meetings the same night of the Select Board. And, um, I would like, I, I would like to change that. We have now set the Select Board's meeting, uh, scheduled for the remaining of the calendar year. And, um, I'm going to probably propose that for our next agenda item to actually go through and even make a vote that, again, we can't control those that are, um, independent, but we at least, I think should have some say. And we can't overlap, there have been numerous meetings that I wish I could attend, which I can't.
And I hundred percent agree with you, Eric. I really would have been to like, a lot of these ZBA hearings that were all on Thursday nights. And I know all the Concom meetings are the same night as our meetings, so I, I, I one hundred percent agree.
Yeah, and when, oh, there are only two meeting rooms in Town Hall, it made it a little bit easier not to do that, but, Zoom is infinite, like we said. Um, before we do it, one, I'm going to have one more thing, just because I know we're not going to take a vote, um, to actually require the recording and archiving and at this meeting. But Diane, I'm going to put you on the spot one more time. Do not, um, not, I guess, allow the deletion of tonight's Concom meeting, just because if that's, if that's happening, if they're actually deleting or disappearing. At least I want people archived to, um, until our next vote, to see if that vote goes through.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, now moving on, agenda item number eight, consideration of routine business.
Uh, would you want to do select board reports first?
Sure, let's do that, yeah.
I, I'm coordinating with the, um, COA, Susan here, I think. You know, we, we still need to talk about it, it didn't get passed the town meeting, but I think we, as part of our Town Hall reconfiguration, other things, we need to talk about the study of the COA's needs for facilities in general. And, um, so, so I'm just coordinating with them right now and hopefully it'll be an agenda item in, um, you know, in the next month, say, something like that, to talk about the potential study that we would fund as a town. Because it really, um, helps us figure out how to use our other facilities that we have in town, including the community center, so.
Eric?
Yeah, Paul, yeah, please go ahead.
I just want to piggyback on that, at the ballot box, the senior center question passed.
I saw that.
And, and that means, um, that the majority of the voters of the town think that money should be spent. That's a more representative sampling than town meeting. I, I think there's so many, uh, good things that could come out of this study. And it's such short money. And given that a majority of the voters supported, I think we should be asking for a reserve fund transfer. Get it done.
It was voted down at town meeting, that is ridiculous, we do not vote, go against what was voted at town meeting.
The voters said otherwise.
We can talk about it, George, it was, it was not presented well at town meeting. At town meeting, it had the word, I think, architectural design or something, there's some. The, it was partly the COA's fault, but the people really didn't know what they were voting on. They didn't, didn't have a presentation, let me finish a second, they didn't have a presentation to give, saying what the scope of the work was. And it wasn't, you know, I got up there as you saw and I tried to speak to what it really meant. But I don't think the voters were given enough information to decide.
Okay, we'll let them decide next year at town meeting, I don't think we do it.
I, I'm not waiting for them, but.
Down at town meeting, how would you feel if the turf field came and said, I want a reserve fund transfer?
I, I would be happy to vote on it.
Meeting, they, they, there, there's a reason things are voted on at town meeting, it was voted down.
Well, we can, we can discuss this on another agenda.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna.
You can oppose it all you want, George.
Reserve fund transfers because we want something, I, I, that's terrible, that's a terrible precedent.
The only thing I'm going to add, I'm going to add, is that, um, something that was a little unique with the, um, with the study, is that actually one, a majority have failed to win the two thirds. And during the advisory committee meeting, which the select board was at, they actually had that discussion about, should we use free cash or should we actually bond it? And advisory kind of had, and Steven Sizer are kind of a blanket thing, we just want to bond everything, so we want to, want to minimize the use of free cash. Had that decision been different, it actually would have passed. It did actually pass free cash vote.
Let me, let me also point something else out, Paul says they got more yes votes, add the no's and the blanks. I left it blank because it was an irrelevant thing. The no's and the blanks were higher than the yeses, so let's be clear how this vote actually went. Don't, it was voted by a majority, I don't think.
Yeah, and I'm not going to put much credibility to the actual ballot vote, cause I want.
Exactly, it was useless, it was irrelevant.
Thing that, but I do think it's telling that a town meeting had won the majority but not to two thirds. And it almost was nominated by advisory to go free cash, cause it was such a small amount. But we kind of took the policy thought of, um, of, you know, we wanted to bond everything. So technically, if we actually used free cash, we actually are going consistent with town meeting vote.
Oh, right, you know, I, I just have a comment here. I, I actually agree a little more with George and with the others, even though I'm a senior, simply because I felt the, uh, everyone else has to really do their homework before they come to town meeting or the ballot. And, uh, I see Sue Kellahairs on here and she's not going to be happy with what I say perhaps, but, uh, somehow the, uh, question at town meeting was kind of like, do you support seniors or not in a way? And of course we support seniors, but, uh, the point is that I think if they're going to ask for money from the town, that we need to know precisely what information they have right now. And what information do they still need? That is, it's not clear to me how much, how much of a study is needed here. Exactly what kind of expertise is needed here? What questions have not yet been answered? I mean, maybe I'm asking too much, but that's what we ask of the other people who come to town meeting for asking for money. So I just think, uh, my, my feeling is that part of that request was a request to help the, uh, help the COA figure out what it is they want. And I don't think they, uh, what, what it is they, they need and don't already have. And if that could be clarified a little bit within the COA, I'd be much more willing to look at funding something to collect the information that they cannot collect on their own. Uh, so, you know, uh, I'm sure Sue's going to speak now, but, uh, I'm not against, uh, supporting the COA's needs, on the contrary, I'm totally for it. But I'd like to hear a clear definition of what those needs actually are in terms of space and, uh, money, so.
Before we switch to Sue, I'd just like to say that, that's certainly true, that's what I was trying to say. They didn't communicate really what they were asking for well at all.
That's not an agenda item, so I just.
I know, but it is, it is an agenda item, because it's a select board report, I just gave a status report. So, so one thing I'll say is that we can probably achieve both. If we've talked about, we may have to have a special town meeting this fall for the, uh, Cooley Street project perhaps. So it turns out the consultant they want to hire isn't available till January to do the work, cause they're so busy with this kind of work right now. So I think it's going to work out fine, I don't think, I, I don't disagree with what's been said, but I don't think the case has been made properly.
And what kind of consulting has, have they done, uh, with their own sources?
Yeah, yeah, no, all of that needs to be addressed, I know all that. I, I've been talking with Christine Litterfeld and other people, just to try and help them present their package better.
Yeah, Jeff, I think it's, it's great that you're helping them, cause I think that's what.
Can I just, um, say a couple of things?
Okay, I want to recognize Sue, but Sue, instead of going point by point responding to this big discussion, dancing on the edge of what's allowable under our select board report and turning this into a larger gen, a much larger.
I'm just going to give a quick overview. Um, I agree that they did not, we did not present properly at town meeting. It was my first time, Christina's first time, so I agree. We had done several presentations prior to, to the Select Board and to the advisory about our needs and what the population was and everything. We've recently had, um, a woman from UMass Gerontology Institute who came and did a presentation to us the other day. So this would be a community assessment, that would be, um, all the details and it covers all of the town, all of the age groups, everybody. And does an assessment on what the needs are for everybody. So it's different than the feasibility study, it's more about a community assessment and what, um, people want in the community and what the needs are. And then they make recommendations, they've done it for fifty, uh, towns, and then they do comparisons. It's a very intense assessment, which would answer everybody's questions and give everybody a clear indication. It might, may not be that we need a building, it may be that we stay in Town Hall, it, but we don't know. And we have some information about population and demographic changes and things like that. But these are the experts that can provide all the in- information that people need in town.
All right, I'm going to, um, call it there. Um, usually select board reports is like thanking the garden club for the flowers and this one went a little bit away.
Sorry.
But Jeff, let me know if you want to actually make an agenda item to utilize, um, what transfer, uh, transfer fund, whatever else. And we'll gladly have more of a, and, uh, true discussion and perhaps even a presentation from, um, the Council of Aging as well.
Yep, thank you.
I would like to thank the garden club, by the way, but anyways, any other select board reports?
Does each select board member, uh, represent or have, you know, walked over other committees and boards and bring them back? How does this work?
Only, only, only when we think needed, so if, if there's something comes up and then we'll say like, okay, we think a select board member should pay attention to this, then we have a discussion about that. But it's not uniform, like if I go on this list of everything we nominated, no, we, it's not like advisory, we don't have someone assigned to each one of these, um, each one is committees or anything like that, basically on as needed type basis.
And it's more, these select board reports are, a lot of times, like if Paul's giving a speech at like a Memorial Day thing, or Jeff gave the graduation speech, or stuff that's going around town that, that we've participated in, we can report it back to the select board.
The only slight exception is Eric and I've been pretty involved with the library. I still attend all the library trustees and library building committee meetings. So we also have expertise, just like George is going to be on the trust, you know, coming up. So we do sometimes get involved in things, just where it needs a little bit of additional.
As needed, as needed. I think when, when I started, um, attending the library meetings, Jeff was attending for advisory, I think, back then.
Yeah, that's right.
Right, well, I'll probably keep attending planning board meetings, just cause I'm so interested in it. So if things are coming down the road that you should know about, I guess, I could let you know.
That's always appreciated, absolutely. All right, move on, um, Town Administrator Report, Diane, what do you got to say? I think we're good.
I don't have anything, no.
Okay, anything to do, um, and I'm going to move that we actually go into executive session, um, for the agenda items and for the re-end, for the justifications as previously read by the Assistant Town Administrator. As I, as Chair, uh, declared that a, um, executive session is warranted and of course we'll be leaving open session to do that. Um, just for administrative purposes, we may exit into open session at the very end, just as if we close the meeting, there are no more open session agenda items after this. Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Uh, George?
Hi.
Uh, Paul?
Hi.
And Mary Ann?
Hi.
Okay, I am I as well, thank you very much.